I think we're gonna do the same, same kinda situation. We'll do two minutes for each candidate and um, just to kinda give some opening statements. So if you wanna start, Councilor Boyd?
Okay.
Well, first of all, not to stand, let me thank you all for inviting me. You said that you believe in Birmingham, I believe in Birmingham. I believe in it so much that I have tried to make it a better place to live, work, and play. Uh, when you consider that we're bringing a hundred and fifty million dollars into this district with the development of Crossplex, uh, with twenty different restaurants, ample theater, um, and then when you consider the city as a whole, um, Regent's Park, uh, when you consider entertainment as district, I believe in this economic. I believe also that economic parity with respect to, um, all persons, all walks of life have an opportunity to make money in this city. And so, when I served as Chair, Vice Chair of the Airport Authority, we ensured that sixty-two million dollars were spent with all our contractors. The highest participation in the history of the city of Birmingham. And so, I believe in the women, I believe in the men, the boys, the girls, I believe in the seniors. Uh, I believe in Birmingham period, because that's what it takes to make this world go around. And certainly, I believe in the neighborhood. Uh, we have assisted with a hundred and fifty houses, single-family houses being built in this district. Uh, and of course, we're getting ready to break ground again and build the highest and finish off the thirty-two houses we promised to build there. So, uh, we build houses in just about every neighborhood in my district. Uh, we've, uh, put, put, uh, ten million dollars to our parks. And, uh, and then even just, uh, maybe a month ago, uh, dedicated, uh, two thousand dollars to Central Park. All of my parks are received, uh, if they've not all received upgrades, they are in the queue to be received upgrades. Uh, haven't done all the streets, but guess what? We come up with a plan that addresses all of our streets, five-year, five-year plan to deal with that. Uh, and of course, when it comes to our children, uh, as one who, um, who has a daughter, uh, entered law school this, um, last week at Alabama, I believe in, in our young people, that's why I created a scholarship four years ago, that sends, uh, that we've given out to twenty-eight students out of fifty-eight that we interviewed, and twenty-seven thousand dollars to this state that we've given to college-bound students. And, and so, uh, I believe in our children, I believe in education. Uh, I also believe in the neighborhood, I believe in, uh, neighborhoods is where everything happens. You know, we move, I move, and so, everything I've done, uh, with respect to this district has been done together. You know, we have done it together. You told me you didn't want me to leave for nothing, I mean, you didn't wanna leave for nothing. And I'm trying to ensure that you don't leave for a theater, for a restaurant, for nothing. Oh, stop. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I got the opportunity to go five minutes now. With all due respect, uh, thank you everyone for coming out. Uh, I wanna thank the candidates also for being here. It's not an easy job to put yourself on this, uh, type of platform, and it takes a special person to hold themselves out for public service. Um, to begin, to introduce myself, my name is Atlee Marcel Tron. Uh, I grew up, actually, I was born and conceived in the district, I'm a native here. My parents lived in the West Princeton, uh, neighborhood when I was born at Cooper Green Hospital, and shortly after, they moved over and was able to buy a house in Fairview neighborhood. And that was, that was beautiful to me as a young man. And the reason why I'm here today is because the neighborhood, the district, doesn't look remotely close to the way that it looked when I grew up as a young man. Uh, I left the neighborhood in nineteen ninety-two. Uh, I was a freshman, actually, I completed my freshman year at Anslia High School, and, uh, there are a lot of things going on, violence. If you look at the violence that was going on then, it's remotely equivalent to the violence that's going on now. Uh, I've lost a lot of friends, I've lost young people. I, basically, I participated as an educator in the Birmingham City School System, and I don't think that the tension is being, uh, revealed or deserved of what needs to be actually discussed, the conversations. March thirtieth, uh, right in the Bush Hills Alley, there was a young man and a, a, a young man that was murdered in a trunk. Uh, right after June seventh, uh, in the Fairview neighborhood, a young man, a body in a trunk. Where you losing our young people. Right after Mother's Day, there was a shootout on, uh, Twentieth Street, Anslia, where it completely destroyed the entire block. And these are things that you don't hear, but it's things that I see, uh, just being around the neighborhood. A lot of my friends, family, uh, individuals that I grew up with still in the neighborhood, and there are a lot of things that are going on that aren't discussed. When you look at, uh, when you look at commercial property, you look at lap, dilapidated, it's not just neighborhoods, it's not just houses. It's commercial property that's all over the district. Uh, when you look at Central Park and Associated Foods, you know, there's property there that is completely removed. When you look where Bargain Town used to be and Bonanza, you know, I visited these places as a child, and they aren't there anymore. When you look at Five Points West, and we talk about what's being rebuilt there, that was a prominent area for the entire state of Alabama, when you look at the Fairgrounds, when you look at, uh, Perrigons, J.C. Penney's, Zare. And there are also local establishments that were there, like Speedy Gunn Galleys, Marsh Bakery. And I, if you're actually from this neighborhood and you have history in this neighborhood, then you know the type of, uh, you know the type of facilities that I'm talking about. So, it is my plan and I'm running for city council for this district, because I like to see, uh, the, I like to see the district stabilized, or at leastly operating at that type of capacity that it was when I was a young man. Thank you for your time and thanks for being here.
Oh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Monette Peters, and I am a mother first. And I am running for this seat to improve District Eight within the city of Birmingham. I am not your average politician, I never will be, but I can guarantee you one thing, whatever I work on, I shall complete. And if I do not complete it, you will know why I did not complete it. I'm here to work with the mayor and all the city councils. At the end of the day, we can agree to disagree, but we will get something done. I have over twenty years' experience as a neighborhood officer. I have sat in that, in that position as president by myself. Sometimes I didn't even have secretary or a vice president, never did I remove anyone from their seat. I have been a PTA president, I have been a PTA vice president, I have been a PTA secretary, I have been a Girl Scout troop leader. I'm all about advancing our youth. I believe our pressing issue is education, violence, and public safety. And our neighborhoods look deplo- deployed, our parks look deployed. I went to Central Park for a football game Saturday, and it had rained so much out there. When you pay to go through the gate, it's mud right there. You have people coming in to our parks for, to look at our kids playing. We had over two hundred youth playing Saturday, and they was talking about the field. The gate was put up, but it was an old gate. It's lucky, they took it from one park that's been closed about to Central Park. So I'm here fighting for our children, I'm here fighting for the youth, I'm here fighting for the neighborhood. And I want you to know that I will this job, it's time for the change.
Um, what is the most pressing issue in the city today?
Our top three pressing issues is neighborhoods, education, and public safety. Our neighborhoods, as I said earlier, are deployed. We have, when I was the president, eight years ago, I had houses put on the list for, to be condemned and tore down. They came out and then marked the houses, but as of this year, when I started running for this seat, they came and tore down two houses on the same street that got burned down before they tore down the houses that have been condemned. So, my pressing issue is our neighborhoods. If you walk out into a neighborhood, a field, overgrown lots, torn down, I mean, houses that standing up where, where it look like a pasture. I'm from the country, a pasture means the grass is over your head. And we have that industry today. I did a video Saturday. I only went on two streets in Enslia Heights, I couldn't make the whole district. I have over eight houses on two blocks where the grass is higher than me. Now, these houses have rats in them, they have dogs living up under it. It's in condition that is not, that is not acceptable. We need to put money into our neighborhoods. We need to make the people that own these houses accountable. If we tear them down, you need to pay us for tearing them down. We don't need to, uh, apply for grants to tear down somebody else's property. We need to apply for grants to build houses where people can come in and afford a house. Education, we need to improve our education where people will also move back into the district. Public safety, we need to give the police department more money.
Sir?
Yes. Uh, the question you repeated?
Um, what's the most pressing issue in District Eight today?
The most pressing issue in this, in District Eight, and I think it resonates to Birmingham as a whole. Uh, I think it's unity and with an agenda upon the leadership. Uh, we see so much division, uh, amongst our, one, we'll start with elected officials. Um, there is so much division in our elected officials, and that basically is a trickle-down effect. You see that trickling down to other areas between our neighborhoods, our young people, uh, our elderly people, as well as our youth. Uh, unity is gonna be important, so we can work together for a common cause for the greater good of Birmingham. That also resonates to District Eight. Uh, we have Crossplex shouldn't have looked the way that it looked for eight-plus years. Growing up here, uh, that is a reputable location. I grew up where it's a fairground, it has a history of being, uh, where the racetrack used to be. That's one of, uh, the oldest racetracks with the National Race Car Association, that's history. It's removed now. Um, if we would have unity and we would have an agenda and we would work together for a common cause, that would have been developed. And that's the issue. Once we work together on a common cause, it will handle all our issues, from crime, because we will work together to, uh, prevent crime. Crime is basically, it's been a byproduct of our youth being neglected. They don't have jobs, extracurricular activities aren't there, and also what's going on within our school system. Um, I've been basically involved in our school system for the last eight years, where two years I was a math teacher, or two and a half years, I was a math instructor, uh, in our middle schools and high schools. The other years, I actually held myself out as a tutor, as well as a substitute. But, when you see the curriculum that's going on in our schools, it is not, uh, it's not operating as a school system. It's been operating almost like a daycare. So you can see our young people being neglected, but they get on their own and they develop their own agenda, and that's what we're seeing in our neighborhoods, it's a byproduct of them being neglected, and that's gonna come with unity. We also look at our neighborhoods need to be revitalized. But that's gonna come up a byproduct of, one, paying attention to our youth, and also making it accessible for individuals to come in and making them feel safe.
Thank you. Um, I think the most pressing issue is education. I think we have to invest in education, and the council has done so. Uh, we've increased, uh, their budget by, uh, two million dollars. Uh, we're sending over in this new budget with respect to our children. Uh, but I think it's also, uh, we have to create opportunity for our young people. Uh, that's why Starbucks is coming in, they're gonna hire thirty-seven young people and give them jobs. They can even go to school free, absolutely free, go to college free, if they work there. They can even have stock options, you know? The issue with crime is the fact that you haven't had access to job opportunities, and that's what we are attempting to create. When you look at the Crossplex, you know, it, it has been vast, but it's been, but it's not been absent of trying to bring the right developer. Every developer who came to the Crossplex wanted to build a Walmart. Well, if you do, build a Walmart, guess what happens? You look like straffy, you don't like sport. And so, Walmart wasn't the best product. Every developer came, we came with Walmart, and I didn't want Walmart, because I've seen the, 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 uh, the destruction of Walmart, what it could do to a community. So, we got the right developer, who came in, a former banker, and said, listen, I'm gonna, not only am I gonna develop here, I'm gonna invest my own money to, to the Crossplex. We, and, and listen, based on pre-construction, construction, and post-construction, we would have created three hundred jobs, three hundred and twenty jobs for our folk, whether they're young or old, or middle-aged, or retired, they have opportunity. And so, if you ask the question, are we any better off? Sure we are, because we have an opportunity to really change the dynamics of this community. And listen, I've been, not only that, but I've been a neighborhood officer. I've seen the same thing that you've seen, but I also wanna say, when those things were here, uh, they didn't fall when I came in office, they had already fallen. And so, I've spent my twelve years as a council trying to rebuild and trying to revitalize, and listen, and get a hundred and fifty million dollars dedicated to our district alone, that's progress. I don't know what, I mean, that's progress, that's moving. That's being, uh, delivered and intentional in terms of how we empower the people who live in this community. I don't want you to have to leave here for a theater, a bowling alley, a hotel, a restaurant, any of those things. That's what you told me. So I've been working on the plan that you told me you wanted, and that's all I've been doing. I've spent twelve years working at the plan that you told me that you wanted, and it says, stop.
Hold on, uh, actually, we're gonna start with you.
Okay.
Next one's going back and down the line.
Okay, so I'll give another five minutes.
Um, so what we just talked about was District Eight. Um, now I'd like you to add, to answer, what do you think is most pressing for the city as a whole, city Birmingham?
What's, what's pressing is economic vitality. And I say that when you read the Birmingham news, uh, this past week, uh, you saw that less than, that four percent of those dollars had made into the African-American community. That's alarming to me, in a city that has so much promise. I mean, whereas we have a five, a Fortune five-hundred company, we have UAB, we have all these various entities, uh, throughout this city. And listen, my job was, uh, as, as a council, is to write legislation. And I have written the historical, the use of our policy. We, uh, I commissioned a disparity study to look at how we might get others to the table, women and, and, and blacks, and Ameri-, I mean, African-Americans to the, to the, uh, table. It's about economic parity, and we don't have that. And listen, and the reason why it's so important, because then our community gets to change. We can become the Avondale, we can become the South Side, we can become the Crestline. You know, that's what we, that's what, that's, that's what economic development does. It creates those, that kind of synergy, and so, as a, as a, as a leader, my job is to work towards that end. And, and talking about vacant lots, I have to say, every week, I give a list to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I need you to tear down this house, I need you to tear, cut this grass, and all this kinda stuff. That's a mayor's responsibility. And if you knew that, and if you, uh, go and research, that's not your responsibility to tear down a house, that's the job of the mayor. I, if I tell somebody to tear down a house, you know what happened to me? I get a case, and I can go down to, to, down into, uh, my government. My wife, she ain't gonna cope with me, not one time. And so, she said, you better be the best council you'll be. I've been trying to be the best counselor that this district had ever had, twelve years of service, and I've sacrificed. But it's one that I embrace, because I think it's better that I found it.
Well, I know I already answered your question, but I wanna reiterate and answer it again. Uh, the problem or the issue that Birmingham faces as a whole is unity. Um, I have to reiterate that. Uh, today you look, right now, we're past the deadline, and this has been an ongoing cycle in terms of us passing a budget. For some reason, we can't pass the budget by time, on time, and it ends up going over and spilling over into August, and then there are issues amongst, uh, city officials. I had, I talked to a public works official, I mean, a public works worker today. He said, we can't even get toilet paper because the budget hasn't been passed. Now, is that the issue, is that not the issue? Well, I mean, who's to say? But, here's one thing we can say, the budget has not been passed. And it wasn't passed last year, and this has been an ongoing trend. When we look at a, a competitor city like Atlanta, they had their budget passed before July the first. When you're moving and you, you're handling business and you're meeting deadlines, then you can get stuff done in time. But when you allow those deadlines to a pass, then you have, like, what you see at the Crossplex. One issue that's going on, particularly speaking in the Fairview community, it's not called Fairview anymore. The young people call it Viewmark. Raise your hand if you ever heard of Viewmark. Our young people hear of Viewmark, our older people don't hear of Viewmark. That's what they call the Fairview neighborhood. That's a disconnect. Since you don't see a fairground, they have taken away the fairgrounds name, or they've taken fair out of Fairview, and they call it Viewmark. That's an issue. And being the fact that a lot of our older people haven't heard that name, that's why you see crime. There isn't any unity. We need to bridge these gaps, so that we can basically connect with our young people and make sure that they're using their energy in the right places and not the wrong places.
I'm gonna stand up on this one. The most pressing issue that is citywide is the killing of our children, our parents, and our neighbors. Until we get the crime right down, no economic development can be prosperous. Why would, if we're killing people at the rate that we're killing them every day, someone is getting killed, or every day, two people are dying, every other week, it's a child, that's senseless. Crime is the most pressing issue. We need to put money into public safety, so we can see the police officers back in our neighborhoods like we used to. Deployable housing, that's not an issue, it's the lives that we must save. And we need to put police officers back on beat. It is, when I first moved here in ninety-one, I used to see the police come through the neighborhood every fifteen minutes, every fifteen minutes. Now, you have to call when something has happened for the police to come to your neighborhood. We shouldn't have to live like that. Every parent, we have to pray every second of the day that our child come home. We have to pray for the children that we know and the children that we don't know, that another life is saved at the end of the day. In the middle of the night, we have to pray, when our children is not there. We shouldn't have to live like that. Right now, we're number ten, we're the most, we are the number ten deadliest city in the United States. We shouldn't even be in that ranking. When New Orleans was in that ranking, the mayor put a crime force in place, and he increased the police, he increased the police presence, and that's what we need. So that's what my most pressing issue is life, is to live another day, to see my children live another day, to see my grandchildren live another day, to see my neighbors live another day. Because when someone come to your house and shoot your grandbaby in the head, that hurts. When your child is shot visiting somebody's house and they just sitting in the car, that hurts. When a brother is arguing with another brother and he kills his brother, that, that impacts the whole community. And it's time out for it.
This is back to you, actually. How do you propose to better communicate with the citizens of your district?
Transparency. Tran-, it starts with transparency. When I'm, if I am elected, I want transparency in my office. I want an open-door policy. I want to set up a website where District Eight citizens can go there, write out their complaints, get a ticket. It comes to my office, the people in my office respond in a timely manner and right. I'm going to work with the other city councils, because we all have to work together to get something done. One vote, I need four, I need five people to vote for me, including me. Um, the mayor, you must have communication with the mayor. He is the head, I'm the tail, the citizens is the body. I will fight to the end for my citizens, and if something goes wrong, they will know why it went wrong and what we need to do to make it right. So transparency is the most, most to have to offer to citizens of District Eight.
Basically, uh, I would, I would like to utilize, uh, the grassroots efforts of, of the campaign that I'm running. Um, and that's basically engaging citizens and going to them. There are a lot of individuals that aren't going to City Hall, and they have pressing issues and they have a voice that needs to be heard. Uh, transparency is extremely important, but what I will act as is a liaison between City Hall and those individuals that aren't coming to City Hall. I would also like to engage our youth, so that we'll have a juniors ambassador, uh, type of program, so that they can be connected and understand the issues as well. It's extremely important for us to groom our young people to the issues that are going on, so they can understand how to resolve them, how does it, uh, deals with politics, but also, how can we come up with creative solutions and making sure that their voice is heard? Um, also, just continuing workshops, town hall meetings, quarterly town hall meetings, and making sure that I'm engaging the voices that aren't being heard and their voices can be heard in City Hall.
Well, continue to do the things that I've been doing, and that is coming to all our neighborhood meetings, uh, having town halls, um, and talk about transparency. If you get a ticket out of my office, Miss, Miss Peterson and, and some of the neighborhood officers know, if you get a ticket out of my office, you sign for it, because I believe in transparency. My door is never closed, my door is always open. And so, um, but to, uh, and talking about communication, well, as Chair of Public Safety, um, I've had an opportunity to, to, uh, to buy a system, um, with, with, um, with the city of Birmingham called Everbridge. If you get a call now, um, telling you about the storm or what have you, that's Everbridge program. That's a program that we brought, uh, since I've been Chairman of, of Public Safety, and that is, we can call every home in Jefferson County and to alert them. But we also use that as an opportunity to inform our residents, in terms of town hall meetings, uh, whether there's something that's happened catastrophically and what have. So the communication, uh, I employ, but, but ain't no more, uh, communication than, than my coming to you. And, 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 and matter of fact, all of my numbers are available. I have two cell phones, I have a house phone, and they use it all. And so, I'm accessible to the people. Uh, one of the good things about campaign is that you get to knock on the doors, and you get to, uh, get to know what people's, uh, concerns are. And I try to address those concerns as I've gone through, uh, these communities. I've knocked on a bunch of doors, and, and quite frankly, in some of these places, uh, you know, their, their concerns are very legitimate. And we try to address them, and matter of fact, my staff have been, uh, telling me that they've been calling in and getting things done. So, um, communication's key. I think we have to have that, uh, you have to work with the mayor. I'm glad, you know, we talked about working with folk, but you can't, you got to quantify it. And you can't infuse a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your community and you don't quantify it. You know, you just don't, that doesn't happen, you can't, but you vote yourself a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can't vote into these funds, you gotta have five votes, that's how it works. And then you have to work with the mayor. Yeah, we're getting ready to build some more houses and build pipes. You know, we built some in, in Fairview, we built some in, in, uh, in Anslia, we built some in, in, in Central Park. We built some in, in all of these communities, you know, in rise of West Princeton. And so, um, those things are being, being done, but we communicate, uh, when you come to the meeting and you send our message, it's stop, okay?
You just gotta quit entering now. All right. What are your thoughts on the city budget, and what would you see changed?
Well, um, what we did change is that, um, the mayor had only to bid, I think, uh, a million dollars for our students, and we doubled that by two million. So that's a change. Uh, when you look at, uh, public safety, uh, we agree that we keep them at, at, at level. Matter of fact, we had, now, I take that fact, we increased it by five million dollars, uh, the, uh, Police Department. We increased the, um, the, um, the, the, well, that was Public Works. We increased just one other department by a million dollars or so, oh, the, uh, Board of Education, the dollars we gave them, we increased that. So, um, our budget is reflective of how we feel, and even what came to weeds and abatement. And, uh, in Public Works, we increased that budget by three million dollars to tear down additional houses. And let me just say this, we started off with fifteen thousand vacant houses and lots in Birmingham, but we've torn down twenty-five hundred to date. Now, grant you, it's not enough, but we're working on it, and you have to work on it. And let me say this too, I hadn't always been the council for District Eight. District Eight was, I mean, uh, for Central Park, 'cause there's a lot of flack about Central Park. I inherited Central Park, I, this is the first four years I've had Central Park. It was neglected by somebody else who served in that capacity. I had, I had north of, of Third Avenue, and I, and I got, and I acquired the south of Third Avenue just in this quarter. But listen, it is better, we have torn down at least fifty houses over there, you know? And so, uh, it's getting better, and, and, and all of our communities, and so, we're here to help. And I've been a, I think I've been a good steward of the, of the tax bills, time and money. And we have addressed, uh, these issues that we think, that you all have said to me, that were important to you, they are important to me. And we have addressed, uh, these issues that we think that you all have said to me that were important to you. They are important to me.
Mr. Trump?
Yes, would you repeat the question?
Um, what are your thoughts on the city budget and what would you like to see changed?
Uh, my thoughts on the city budget, there, there are a couple of areas, uh, that have, that have been neglected. Um, and, uh, to the councilman's point, um, actually, it's not one point five million. It's actually two million that they had in the proposed budget to go towards education, and they are proposing to put two million there. Um, when you look at what's going on between education, the proposed budget is two million going to education. One point five million is actually allocated towards youth services, and it's approximately seventy-five thousand that's being allocated towards social services. These are areas that we need to pay more attention to. Uh, my past profession, I used to be a financial planner, and as a financial planner, I had a business and I had financial, uh, clients, and I would go and do financial planning for my clients. And one thing that we would always highlight or recognize is, what are the priorities in your household? Education is a priority to anyone with children, and if it's not, then it should be. So right now, when you look at the budget, it's less than one or two percent of an overall budget. We have four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty-five million dollars that's proposed in the budget in terms of revenue. The one or two percent is being allocated towards those, those individual categories. I'd like to see more in those areas. Education specifically, um, youth services and social services. There isn't enough tension there, and that's why we're seeing the issues that we're seeing. You have more money being designated or allocated to the zoo than you have going to our children. So it's no, so when you say, why are they acting the way they are acting? Our budget reflects that it's more attention to the animals that are in Birmingham than it is to our young people. And I would be an advocate for our young people. I'll be an advocate for your education. I'll be an advocate for extracurricular activities for our youth.
Yes, I went and pulled the budget on my time. And I, I, I reviewed the budget. So I stand with Mr. Trump on the issues that he just said about the budget, so I only emphasize that. But the most thing I said, we need to revise it. A few things I seen in there, and it was a lot, but a few things that really caught my eye was public safety, housing for mentally ill, set aside funds for citizens' housing improvements and affordable housing. Less money for U A B. I didn't see Miles College in there. I didn't see Sanford in there. Uh, the mayor has many administrative systems. It was so many administrative systems in that budget. I lost count after twenty-four. It's top heavy. On page thirty-five, why? Why have we given Applebee's money? Why have we given all these companies in there that supposed to hire our citizens in our district to work? But I didn't see, I don't, I, I didn't see no use for that. On page thirty-five of the budget, we got over twenty companies getting money from the city. More money for public safety, especially the Public Department. Those are, and they are tangents in this deep pool.
You don't want to laugh, Father? That's fine. That's fine.
Uh, Ms. Peters, how will you, how will you use your discretionary fund?
My discretionary funds will be basically used for education. Nonprofits that are working with our youth, really working with our youth, and not just centralizing some youth, but really working with our youth to educate them, put into the principle of what education is all about, the need for education. I would use my discretion, discretion, discretionary funds for giving to the schools, giving to nonprofits, putting more into, more for senior citizens in District Eight for as hiring people to keep their grass up or maintain their properties when they cannot maintain their properties. I did that when I was, when I was a neighborhood officer. I educated my money to the schools. If you start with the education and you start in schools, I want to do scholarships. I want to do school uniforms. We have a lot of kids that can't afford uniforms here, right? People do book bags and uniforms, uh, giveaways at beginning of school. I want to set a fund up, if a child's in their school and they need a uniform, they should be able to go to that uni, go to the school and get that uniform out of the closet and utilize it. And that's how I want to use my discretionary funds.
Uh, my purpose and my intent to utilize, uh, discretionary funds is allocated to me as a councilman. Uh, first, it would be workforce development, and particularly speaking to increase financial literacy and having workshops so that we can basically engage our citizens within District Eight and having a better understanding to increase financial literacy. Uh, four years from now, this district will be extremely important for the world games that are coming. We need to make sure that everyone is on an accord to either participate or to have an avenue where they can offer a good or a service. So I want to make sure that this district is completely ready for, to invite the world in. And I didn't say the nation. I said we will be having the world coming in to see us. And I, you already know with the crossplex being where it is, it will be a major cornerstone in those activities that are gonna take place. Also, the second thing that I want to make sure that I have a higher, if not equal, a higher priority is with our young people. I am extremely passionate about our young people and for specific reasons. Um, I grew up, I went to Fayetteville Elementary School, I went to Glenn Middle School, and I also attended Ansl High School. All those schools no longer exist. It's not, i- i- it's not rocket science why our young people are doing the things that they're doing. They've been neglected. No one is paying them any attention. And I will utilize that budget to engage our youth, but also give them opportunities, uh, to partnership with local cooperations, but making sure that we're using that energy and placing it in the right places. Those are two of the main priority areas that I will use in my discretionary funds with the budget.
Thank you. Um, I've used mine to, uh, I've given each one of my schools a thousand dollars in my district in addition to advocating for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to go to community schools. Having sat on that board for more than twenty years, uh, you know, community schools, the school before the school, the school after the school, and sometimes the school during the school. And so those are the kinds of programs that we need to be funded. Uh, but even as, uh, at just, I mean, the, the money that I raise to give these kids scholarships is private money. It's not coming from, not from City Hall. It's coming from me going out, uh, begging COVID America and others to, to, uh, to buy into this. Part of the purpose takes place right here. Any given, uh, first Saturday in October, we have anywhere from five to, uh, nine to ten thousand people show up at this place. And it's a day of empowerment. I have a job fair, education fair, health and wellness. Uh, people's lives have been saved, have presented high blood pressures, and we've been able to triage them right to the hospital and save their lives, save them from having strokes. And so, uh, this place is transformative. Uh, it's a day of empowerment. In two thousand and eleven, we won number one neighborhood program of the year in the United States of America. And in two thousand and thirteen, we won, uh, fourth place in the nation for an initiative that I did with respect to the, uh, to part of the purpose. Out of part of the purpose, we now have education with the purpose. So not only are we providing jobs, we also provide an education opportunities for our young people. One of my mentees, uh, Kenny McQueen, who lived in Fayetteville, uh, went to Berea College. And guess what? When he went to Ghana, I gave him seven hundred dollars in my pocket. I gave him a iPad to use to capture that. You know, I don't have to tell you that, but that's what I did. And, and so, uh, Kenny, and now is, uh, just wrote his first book, and I bought five, fifty of those books, you know, just kind of gave him some money because he needed to get his money back for his books that he wrote. But, uh, and he's a mentee of mine. And so, um, but we hire young people every, every year. The councilor hires interns. We already have a program for young people, and that's year-round interns.
Hold on, where is that? Moving on to the next one. What is your plan to reduce crime in District Eight?
Well, if you recall, uh, when the Fox trap, a young man had been killed there. Before that, I had told them that was something gonna happen there. And as a Chair of Public Safety, uh, matter of fact, you can go and YouTube it. Uh, I closed that place down. Uh, we closed it. I got my colleagues, and we worked together. We closed that place down. You talking about the Chevron Station on Third Avenue? When I told them that somebody was gonna kill, I was on my way to California. My wife called me that Saturday morning and said, guess what? Somebody got killed. I told him that, that Tuesday, that it was out of, out of hand. So as a Chair of Public Safety, uh, those venues, we call them venues of violence. We revoked their business license, in some cases revoked their license period. And so I've been big on crime in this area. If you, if you, uh, know that, uh, uh, what, five years ago, we had the storm that come through? My family, uh, my daughter, my wife and I would hear the guns going at the, at the, uh, at the, uh, Applebee's. And I raised the issue of lighting. And today, we have a, a citywide lighting program because I told the mayor, told the council, it's too dark in this city. And yet, when they did the pilot program, guess where they did it at? In Central Park, right there. That's where it happened. And we all got together and, and, and did, and now we're doing lighting throughout the whole entire city. That's gonna be helpful to us because now you can identify the person or the car, what color it is because the LED, uh, LED lighting is lighting that, that, uh, amplifies. And so you're able to see folk. So we, we want to make it safe. And it is safe. It's safer than it has been. And listen, crime is, is, uh, is, is multiplicity. There are no simple answers to crime. You have to deal with housing. You have to deal with education. You have to deal with, uh, with, uh, with economics. All those things are very important when you talk about crime. And so it's our goal, uh, to create job opportunities. That's why we're trying to create three hundred and twenty jobs with the crossplex. That's gonna be a difference, that you can walk and, uh, over to a job if you have a job at the crossplex. We putting, uh, twenty million dollars into the bus rapid transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trump on crimes?
Crime. Crime. Crime is an important issue. It's probably our most important issue. Uh, and it's gonna be important specifically to engage our young people. The problem relies in the mentality and the spirit of our community right now. Uh, I'll tell you what I've done, um, since coming here, and it, it, it is an emotional issue. Uh, when I was a school teacher at Glenn Middle School, I was the head math teacher during that summer. I lost a, a, a great friend of mine. His name was Julian Tarver. He was assassinated. And, and from there, uh, I haven't been able to leave this district or area. We started out doing a, what we called was Jude Day, and it was in honor of, of my friend Julian. And what we did is, we got the community together. We got, uh, the entities in the community together, from the church to the young people. We had the high school band. We did a peace parade. And we basically had a day to reflect on, uh, peace and try to instill a message of peace, which basically has translated into my message in my platform, which is peace. Peace stands for, it's a peace acronym. It stands for participation, entrepreneurship, achievement, community, environment. That's a simple message, and it's something that I learned as a teacher in terms of delivering something that's simple so that our young people can understand the message that we're trying to send. How do I know that this message is working? Right around the same time that I deliver my peace platform, we have not had a murder in the neighborhood. We're going on over a month and a half. I consider that to be a great thing. Now, do I say that's gonna be, that, is that gonna be, uh, is, is, will there not be another murder in District Eight? Nah, that's too much to say. But I will say, I know com, continuing to deliver this peace message is gonna have an impact on y'all, our young people, because I hear them, they're receiving the message. And I already know, even in this short period of time, we're seeing some results. So I'm gonna continue to deliver the peace message. We're gonna continue to have neighborhood days where we engage our young people, and we're gonna promote peace.
Police presence. That's my sticker, because I am adamant and I can preach on police presence. I had a neighbor, and this, this neighbor had teenage sons. They would go outside and shoot in the air every night in front of my house. They would run around my house, shooting around my house. Lighting. I paid for my night lights. I paid for the one in the front of my house. I paid for the one in the back of my house. And there's no light in the alley going down my house. If we don't get police presence where they secure, where they patrol every fifteen minutes. When my neighbor's sons was doing it, I went to the police department. I talked to them. They left. I told them, look, I got five daughters in my house. I fear for my life at night. If you cannot do anything about these people standing in front of me, shooting guns, then running back in the house, and something, if one of my kids get killed or I get killed, it's your problem. We have to have police presence. When the police started securing that area every thirty minutes, they moved. Because if you doing wrong, you don't want to see the police. That's the last person you want to see. If you doing a drug deal and the police ride by, you gonna get gunned. We don't have police presence, and we need that. We need more lighting. The alleys, I don't see a lot of lights in the alleys. And right now, we have drug dealers riding down the alley behind my house doing drug deals. When I was a neighborhood officer, I'm the one that called. I said, look, don't knock on my door. But they doing such and such out here. But you have neighbors that won't do it because they scared the police gonna save. Such and said, you was selling drugs. I'm gonna turn you in. I'm gonna be the one gonna give them the license plate number, the color of the car, the time they have. We need police presence. With police presence, people that do beg, they'll be too scared because they don't know what time he comes through that alley. They don't know what time he riding that street. But right now, we might see a police officer every, every six hours.
How do you plan to make an impact on the schools within your district?
On the school? Right now, I am running a race and fighting for Bush Mill School to stay open. I started with that eight years ago. I am an advocate for keeping our schools in our district and our neighborhood. I started at the beginning. I'm gonna end fighting. I believe that all our children deserve a school where they can walk to. Why must we bust, bust our kids to Ramsey? Why must we bust our kids to W J Christian? All five of my kids went to their zone school. I took them to school, they left school. They playing the sports. We should not have schools that are superior because, oh, my child go to Ramsey. Okay, all five of my children go to J. Uh, well, all three of my children went to jail and two of them went to Ansl. I made, I made sure that the teachers did what they was paid to do. If my kids were not being taught, I was the parent you would see. I was the parent that would go to the principal and say, look, my child came home, said, you ain't, that teacher ain't teaching her nothing. She said that, oh, yeah, I don't want to learn anyway, so why should I have y'all open up the book? I actually had, I actually had a teacher tell one of my daughters that I marched up to the school and we got to fight for education, and we got to fight for the zone schools, not just for the special schools.
All right, I think we're gonna take a, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're going down.
And I absolutely love and adore education. Um, but let me speak to the issues specifically. I am an advocate for education, and I think it's one of our most important issues that we must can, what must address. Um, my father is still within me, a, a strong principle of education. Um, and that has carried over to my life. I got three college degrees, two from Auburn and one from the University of Alabama, uh, in Tuscaloosa. Um, education is extremely important, and we must offer our young people a quality education. Now, there's an issue with parenting, and, and we all understand that and we get that, but let's separate that. Um, if the parenting can't be an immediate, short-term solution, then what's our next option? It's important for us as a community, and I'll say it again, it's important for us as a community to go and hijack our schools and make sure that we're, uh, in our schools and make sure that we can engage our young people. Right now, the barriers of entry for someone to volunteer are extremely high. You know, I, I know people here that try to go and they try to get in front of our young people, but the doors are, are extremely high. They don't let individuals in. And I, I don't really understand that all the way because they And I, I don't really understand that all the way because they need us, and it's obvious that they need us. Um, right now in our district, we have five elementary schools. We don't have any high schools. And we need a high school. But we don't have any high schools. But we have five elementary schools. We must build partnerships. We have a, we have two uh, reputable uh, institution, collegiate institutions on separate ends of the district. Birmingham Southern, and then we have Miles College. We must build partnerships where we already have student and college students in our neighborhoods. We must allow them to go and be a voice for our young people as well. So my answer to that is for our community to get involved with the issues that are going on in our neighborhoods. Charter, trying to identify if it's a charter school or not charter school is almost a distraction. We as a community must engage our schools, and we must have an active present voice consistently from day one to day end, and also bridging the gaps between the off-town and the downtown, then the summer, spring breaks and the summer.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned about uh, schools and particularly uh, our schools in, in District Eight. Because uh, when they were gonna, uh, when I found out that they were busing our children over to Semestry, Kelly Garkutin had had a town hall with the proposal to close the school. And I insisted that they allow me to speak. And I had told her that we have torn, that we have lost five, this would have been the fifth school with closing District Eight. And that I was not gonna stand for that. And I stood uh, toe to toe with uh, with April Williams, who called me and asked me to come to that town hall. And I think I represented the van and I both, and, and spoke to her uh, very deliberately because uh, it's not fair for a child to get up at six o'clock in the morning and catch a bus. And and not to mention that parents have jobs, so they have to be at, at six o'clock. And for them to have to walk in the dark, and some in the winter months, it's, oh, it's dark. And listen, and I was so adamant about it, one, the president of the, uh, who's running for mayor, uh, to call herself chastising me, said I was disrespectful when I stood up for, for my school, in my school. And I could tell you that they had promised to build a new uh, Bush school. You remember that, Ms. Peters? You were P T A president over there. And uh, and and then we act, we asked, and they said, well, no, we're not gonna build one, we gonna, we gonna remodel it. And then they came back and said they, they didn't. Well, what I offered, because I've been in development, I've been a construction inspector for Housing Department Development Administrator. I said, listen, uh, they said they only had nine million, they only had seven million dollars. And it took nine million to, to renovate the school. I said, well, then you don't have to do it all at once. You could do it in phases, like I do at uh, at Birmingham, I don't know where I worked there. We did it in phases. They hadn't even considered that. And so now they're considering that. And of course, the kids will go back this, this fall. But the issue is that we have to rally around whoever that representative is gonna be from District Eight. And to ensure that they, and keep their promise with respect to that. Now, I don't, I'm not, I wasn't elected for the school, but I am a fighter for school. When they proposed to close Brown now, I led the efforts to, so that we can rebuild that school right where it was. And guess what? Brown is built now, and it's, it's a wonderful place to be. They uh, own this uh, uh, A Y P. They made A Y P. And so uh, I'm for education. I've been on the, on the ground fighting on behalf of our schools, even though I don't serve on the school.
Okay, moving on. Um, we're gonna do a couple of community questions. So uh, if you raise your hands. First, and I'll, I'll ask that, uh, the questions be addressed to all three candidates.
Not a problem. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Being a neighborhood leader and a former community leader of the Crossflex area and currently the leader of the Crossflex area. Um, I heard one of the, uh, you all speak on unity and also communication. Well, there are projects that are going on in the Crossflex area. You got the Crossflex, and you have a twenty million dollar proposal for the D R T. And the neighborhood, which is Central Park, has been bypassed, meaning we had no communication with the meetings. There are meetings that have been done, and we've been left out. And there are money that's been allocated, we have no knowledge of. And I'm getting to that point to say this. As a, a city council leader, what would you, uh, what type of communication would you implement through being at the city council level to put the voices of the voting neighborhoods back in projects of the city of Birmingham? Because our voices have been taken away from, as for the current mayor and the current counselor, counselor as a whole in the city of Birmingham. So as a elected official coming in, what would you do to put communication and, and uh, and put channel back, the neighborhood's voices back in the neighborhood? And it's, and the, there's another A part to that. They also promised us years ago, when the Crossflex was built, with Larry Lankton administration, that we will have a community swimming pool in that project. Now proposed now, it's another swimming pool. But the current mayor and the current council has said no to the community swimming pool. As coming in council, which